Welcome to the Milford School Committee meeting of February 1st. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast by Milford TV. There are members of the media present. If anybody would like a copy of tonight's meeting, please let any of the members of the school committee know and we'll make sure that you get a copy. The first agenda item is approval of the minutes. Has every committee member had an opportunity to review the minutes? Can I have a motion, please? Motion from Jim, second by Jen, all in favor?
I'm abstaining.
You're abstaining, you weren't here.
So we'll have to revote that.
Yeah.
Just to give it a forum.
Yep. I apologize, I wasn't at the last meeting, I was tied up at that town meeting, so, and you weren't here, John?
I wasn't hearing the mic.
Okay. So we're gonna revote that at the next meeting. Next agenda item is announcement correspondence and distributions. Does anybody have any announcements, correspondence and distributions? Mr. Consigli?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Mrs. Daniels and Mrs. Roach's class for inviting me to read today. We read about Punxsutawney Phyllis. Very good story, so, I appreciate them asking and inviting me.
And I would like to add in that it's very exciting to see our latest round of school committee members sitting out here in the audience. Good luck to all of you, I wish you the best, and thank you for taking the time to run for school committee.
Mr. Jim, can I just add one more thing?
Mm-hmm.
I just wanted to let everyone know that the kindergarten parent information and pre-registration night will take place on Tuesday, February 27th, at 6:00 PM in the Milford High School auditorium. After the presentation, families will have an opportunity to pick up registration packets and ask questions of our Family Resource Center staff and Brookside Memorial Elementary School administrators and educators.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Superintendent, you're also?
I am good.
Okay. Next agenda item is invitation to speak. Is anybody here for invitation to speak? Seeing nobody, the next agenda item is social emotional learning. Lucy?
Hi Lucy. This is different.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me.
Thank you for coming.
So I'm here to talk about social emotional learning, again. Basically, as you all know, we're in the budget process and our district, because we have social emotional learning as one of our primary focuses, I would, I think that if we want to effectively implement social emotional learning in curriculum into our district, that we need to have a director of social emotional learning. So, I just have a couple of little things that I want to share with you, if you don't mind me reading right from it. These are the things that we've talked about in the past several months. What we do know is that research studies have demonstrated that learning happens only after a student's physical, social, and emotional needs have been met. We know that social emotional competence is tied to academic success. If our students are going to succeed academically and become engaged, empathic, and ethical adults, then opportunities to develop social emotional competence are necessary. And, this is, I can't stress this enough, social emotional learning is not just for students with special needs. It is important for our students with disabilities who are less likely to pick up on social cues or who may struggle with emotional and behavioral management, but again, it's not just for students with special needs. So, having me present this as the Director of Special Education, I just want to stress the importance of having social emotional learning for all of our students in the district. Social emotional learning cannot be a once-a-week program, it requires a paradigm shift where we commit to supporting SEL programming and establishing systems for continuous improvement. This person would report to the Superintendent of Schools and work as part of our central admini-, central office team. They would be an integral member of central office leadership, and they will drive targeted and integrated social emotional learning and academic achievement across all schools. So, for effective and sustained SEL implementation, the district requires an individual who will be accountable, accountable for students' SEL growth, curriculum, embedded SEL instruction, SEL assessment, and tiered SEL supports across the district. This person will ensure that all staff are well-trained, equipped, and supported to effectively respond to students impacted by trauma, poverty, and mental health issues. This person will oversee SEL universal assessment and support staff in the utilization of SEL progress monitoring tool and process to track student progress. They will oversee the development and implementation of Tier 2 SEL instruction, and they will identify future sources of SEL funding. This director position is for someone with a strong educational and clinical background. And again, I, I want to, just as a reminder, the SEL grant that we have, the Metro West Early Childhood Grant, we're in, we're currently in year two, so we have two more years, next year we have thirty-five thousand, and the following year, I believe, we have thirty thousand. So the person that would be in charge wouldn't necessarily take over the grant, but they would be responsible for deciding what to use those monies on. One of the things that we want to do for next year is partner with Panorama, so they would, they have partnered with other school districts on tracking SEL progress in all of our students. So it's not enough, we've done some great things, as you know, we've done a lot of SEL initiatives in all of our buildings, and it's been fantastic, but now we need to kind of bring it all together and have somebody oversee it so that we can see if it's working. And that's it.
So Lucy, before, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Before, before you, you wrap up or open it to questions, can you talk about the day change in the social emotional learning and anti-bullying presentation?
Yes, so, we have an overview of SEL and anti-bullying presentation that was rescheduled for, from February.
March thirteenth.
It's March thirteenth, and it's at seven o'clock at Stacy Middle School. And there, there's a couple of us that will be presenting on the overview, we have someone from each building that will just talk about some of the many great things that they're doing in their schools, and then we'll have, I believe, Mr. Kernan will talk about anti-bullying. You don't want to miss it.
I'm sorry, did you say that was Stacy?
Stacy Middle School, seven o'clock, March thirteenth.
Any member have any questions? Lucy, just to, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jim. No, go ahead.
No questions. Okay. Well, we've been talking about this since we started with the budget discussions with Kevin and Craig and Kathy, and, as you can imagine, there were a lot of questions that were posed about what is this position, because it's not a position that you hear about all over the place. And the more we heard, and the more detail we were given, it really started to take shape in terms of what this person would be doing and the value-add that this position is going to bring to the district. And, I think your point is well taken, as someone who has two children in the district right now, I think the focus on social emotional health and learning is permeating everything that you're doing. It's very, very obvious from the perspective of a parent, what's happening in terms of your work, but I also agree with you that to try to sustain that and bring something that's systematic and comprehensive to our district is really the natural next step.
Yes.
So I look forward to hearing more about Panorama, because I think social emotional growth is really hard to measure.
Mm-huh.
But I think when we look around at our students, and it's not just a Milford issue, this is everywhere, every district is going to be the envy of having a position like this, because children with these needs are everywhere, and it's not just some children, it's many, many, many children.
I agree.
And empowering our staff to have the, the skills to work with them.
Yes.
And our staff learn from these trainings also, and it makes them better professionals. So, I think we're moving in a great direction.
Thank you. I think too, the, at the last meeting, there was a question about the Wellness Coordinator and this position, and the difference is, so this year we have the Wellness Committee and the Social Emotional Learning Committee. We combine them because a lot of our initiatives overlap, and we do similar things. The Wellness Coordinator, we were fortunate to have Lisa White, who is a nurse, and she works under the direction of Judy Dagnes, our Director of Nursing. So, that's the Wellness Coordinator. So she facilitated mindfulness, and she did a lot of work, she did box, and hopefully will continue with that next year. The SEL Director is different in that it's going to be curriculum-based and data-based, so, just so you know the difference. Okay?
Awesome, thank you, Lucy.
Thank you.
Just a quick question, Lucy, so, just for clarity, so if, if this position was to be created, the Director would report directly to the Superintendent or to the Assistant Superintendent?
I think that's something that Dr. McIntyre and the school committee and Mr. Consigli can decide. It falls somewhere, if you look in other districts, because some districts do have similar positions, some people have it as an Assistant Superintendent position, some have it as, almost like an instructional coach, so it depends on what, on how we want to look at it. To me, it falls somewhere between Mr. Consigli's position, curriculum instruction, and special ed, because you want it, it's for everybody, so that's the curriculum piece, but it also helps our students with special needs, because they're looking at Tier 1 and Tier 2, so they can support that, so that it will decrease the numbers of students that are coming to us for special ed referrals for social and emotional needs. So I see it as reporting to Dr. McIntyre, because the rest of us do, so, but, again, it could be somebody that's part of our office, because it's so closely related to special education, so it could be someone, Dr. McIntyre, you can help us out with that.
Yeah, I think we're still kind of determining, you know, kind of the org chart on it, but the need is clear.
Definitely, and the reason I ask that question is I feel that you as the Director of Special Education should be involved as well.
Absolutely, and, you know, the, the goal is because this person's part of our central office team, that we'll all be working closely with them, and I believe because I've been involved from the beginning, it would be a partnership with, with our department and the SEL Director.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks, Lucy.
Thank you.
Next agenda item is Milford Special Education Advisory Council. Good evening, Mr. Wilson, how are you?
Very good, thank you for having us.
Thank you for coming.
Took the opportunity to present, basically we have Jessica Minahan coming next week, which we'll, we'll get to, but it kind of was a good, good segue to just let you know what's going on in the CPAC, and kind of how we've developed and where we plan on going with things. So, I'm, again, I'm Chris Wilson, I'm the Vice Chair.
My name is Krista Wallace, I'm the Chairperson of the committee.
Basically, through Lucy's direction, last spring, she approached us to try to get CPAC up and running again. This was something that was part of the Special Education Office back when my son, who's now in eighth grade, was in preschool, so I attended meetings then, and it was very helpful. Since then, the kind of CPAC kind of fell off. When Lucy had approached me about it, I felt that it was a, a good time to use the ten years of experience in the special education process, sitting on one side of the table to help other parents, so, that's where we've, we've created CPAC, so. Like to just quickly go over just the mission statement, just so people that are out there understand what we're all about and what we can do, or if you want to read it, doesn't it? Okay. So, the mission statement is to collaborate with the Special Education Department, Parents and School Committee, in delivering the highest quality education to ensure that every Milford Special Education student has the opportunity to reach his or her maximum potential. In addition, provide supports to parents with special education children and enhance community awareness, understanding, and acceptance of special education issues. So, you know, it's, we are a group of parents that all have children on IEPs, and the idea is to be able to sit into a room and answer questions to other parents that, you know, that haven't navigated the process, and to parents like myself that have navigated the process, and just see how things may match up, and can we help them out, and kind of keep those lines of communication open, or help them with the lines of communication with, with the Special Education staff. So we try to, you know, we're a, a committee that helps, that helps each other out. We also have a lot of engaging speakers that have come in every month, actually, we meet every second Wednesday of the month, make sure that we get that information out, and usually right here in the teacher resource room. So again, it's, you know, obviously, we're on Facebook, we are on Twitter, so, you know, we just, we're, again, we're providing a, a forum for, for parents. And again, we get a lot of good speakers to come in. In particular, we have next Thursday, and that's going to be February 8th at six o'clock at the Stacy Middle School Auditorium, is Jessica Minahan. And she's a very interactive speaker that will be going over anxiety. So, it's even beyond kids that are on IEPs, it's just children that may have the anxiety with taking tests, and kind of how to approach that and how to work with your children on reducing anxiety in, in any type of situation, obviously, and most importantly for this, it's kind of more school-related issue. So, we're looking to have a good turnout at Stacy, it's in the auditorium, again, next Thursday, February 8th at six o'clock.
Awesome. Thank you.
And I think it's important to add that it's not just for what some people may think is anxiety, from what I've learned being a member of the CPAC, is that most kids have some sort of anxiety, even if it doesn't present itself in the normal sense of anxiety. All kids are having some kind of anxiety at school, anxiety at home, whether it's just getting the homework done, or getting everything done, getting to soccer, getting home, eating dinner, getting their clothes off, all those things. So I think it's important for people to realize this isn't just for children with special needs or anxiety, it's really, I think, something that all families can use, and kind of going off what Lucy said, this has stuff to do with the social emotional learning as well. We had Lisa White come in and speak to the group at the beginning of our year, and she talked about the social emotional learning initiative, and a lot of the ideas that she put out, I think, go hand in hand with this type of anxiety that children deal with.
Any member have any questions, comments?
Yeah, I was just gonna note that, you know, special education is such, it can be such a challenging process, and no matter what side of the table you're sitting on, whether you're the school delivering information, or the parent receiving information around a table with a lot of people and a lot of lingo, that can be very overwhelming. I think what struck me is the fact that Lucy reached out to you, Chris, and a lot of times I think a school can take, you know, the track of shying away from parents, because these can be difficult situations, and I think the way we make the difficult situations better and more effective for students is for the school district and parents to partner together and work collaboratively and as a team with understanding, and I think CPAC is a perfect opportunity for this to happen. So, thank you to both of you for stepping up, and to you, Lucy, for acknowledging that we need to revitalize this group in our town for our students. I think it's, it's got great possibilities, and Jessica Minahan, I saw her for the first time this year, and she is unbelievable. She's so engaging and so spot-on with everything from soup to nuts about anxiety, so it's really, it, it's gonna be a great program. So thank you for your work with that.
Thank you.
Chris, can, can you guys just go over your contact information one more time? And this information is extremely important, so anybody watching from home, where can they find you on social media or online?
Well, we have a Facebook page, which is Milford CPAC, it's a group page, Twitter is Milford CPAC as well, and then our email would be milfordcpac@gmail.com, so that's the best way to reach out to us. Just generally, I usually respond to the emails, and then if we have questions, you know, we go through the board and talk about it, but generally, I check that, I try to check it every day, sometimes it might be every other day, but, you know, I think that's working. We've heard from other towns are coming to our presentation next week, so the word is getting out, we're trying, it's been, I'd say that was our biggest struggle this year, is getting the word out. We have a small group of parents that come, about six of us that consistently come, but I think it's just partly getting the word out. It's, it's a small group, and it's a small subset of students, I know it's a large subset of students, but when you look at the whole, it's a small group of students, and people might not know it's there. So Lucy's been instrumental in helping us put that out at the IEP meetings and send it out, Dr. McIntyre also put it out in his newsletter about the presentation next week, so I think that helped, and kind of associating us with that presentation. Hopefully, we'll get our group out and open it up to more people, because we have had some really good speakers, speakers from our own school district, people from outside the district, so hopefully, parents will know we're there to support them as well.
Awesome, and you know, we have a great relationship with some of the local media, so obviously, Milford TV, and we have a great partnership with WMRC and Ray Oger, so perhaps offline, we could connect. I was fortunate enough to have Lucy on Ray's show with me one morning, so I'd love to do the same with you guys, so I can connect with you, Chris, offline, and we can set up, if you'd like to come on to Ray's show one morning, I can connect you with that.
That'll be great, thank you.
Certainly, yeah, I'm certainly looking to grow the group, so, thank you.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Chris, I'd like to say thank you to the both of you, and I think, I think what's so, so important, and Lucy, help me with this, when I first ran, we were, was it the end, we were bringing the Milestones Program online, Dr. Cataldo?
Yes.
Yeah, and there was a group of parents that felt, felt they were alone. I was part of that group, yeah. Yeah, and felt that it was, you know, it was the parents and it was the administration of the school district, and we were miles apart, and we were, really weren't. What it was, but, is communication. Correct. And that's exactly, thank you, that's what your group will, will do, is that a parent that has a child with special needs or, or a learning disability, whatever it is, will have somebody they can reach out to, and say, this is how I'm feeling, this is what I'm up against, you know, Chris, with your experience, you could, you could talk to somebody who has a student in the first grade, and say, been there, done that. Yes. This is what you need to do, you know, stay steady, don't get angry, work the system, and, so, thank you to the both of you, thank you to your group, because, you know, this group can only make things better for all the parents in this district, and it's all through communication. Communication, and there can't ever be enough, I talk about it all the time, there can never be enough communication, no matter where you are. But at least now, with this, you know, group coming back, parents in the district will have some way to go when they need some, they need some help, they need some, you know, answers to their questions. So thank you to you, and thank you, Lucy, for bringing it back. Thank you for all.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Next agenda item is the Milford Public Schools, and this is just the approval of the calendar, of course.
Correct. Yep.
Has everybody had an opportunity to look at the calendar? And I have a motion. Motion from John, second from Jim, all in favor? Next agenda item is report of the Superintendent of Schools.
I have two items tonight, Mr. Chairman. The first item is, this is kind of exciting, we have, we've been highlighted by MasQ, and MasQ is the kind of state education technology organization, and the Milford Public Schools will be hosting a learning tour on February 28th through MasQ, where educators from across the state will tour our schools and learn about our three-year Chromebook rollout and digital learning plan. The vision of the Milford Public Schools is committed to provide a learning environment which empowers all individuals in the school community to meet the challenge of change in increasingly complex world. We strongly believe technology will enhance the quality and scope of teaching and learning, and our goal is to ensure all educators and students will receive equitable access to technology and be integrated across curricula to increase meaningful instruction through the expanded use of digital media, assistive technologies, and universally designed instruction. It's kind of fantastic that, if you look where we've come in the last couple of years, and, you know, now we're being held up as an example for the state to kind of come look at and learn from, so, you know, I'm, I'm very impressed by the work of Dr. Joseph, our technology integration team, and really the support from the community, because we've really come a long way in just a very, very short time, to the point where, a couple years ago, we had a very unreliable infrastructure, now we have a Class A network that's supporting Chromebooks, which at the beginning of the next school year will, will run basically one-to-one from grades three through the senior year of high school, as well as our K-2 students and preschool students having access to technology. The tours will encompass school visits to Woodland, Stacy, and Milford High School to see the active learning in action, discussions with administrators and teachers, a review of the kind of vision plan, the pilot, the rollout, and a refresh plan, and then what we're doing around professional development, and how we, how we actually are rolling out the Chromebooks each year. So it'll be kind of technical in nature, but also for educators to kind of get a sense of kind of what we're doing and why. And so, you know, we're really excited to have them, we've got a number of members of the MasQ Board, I believe, that will be attending, and some technology directors, administrators and teachers from across the state kind of touring our schools to see what we're doing with that technology.
Right.
So that's number one. And the second one, and this is also exciting, is we wrote a grant with Mass Bay Community College and Framingham State University to the state of Massachusetts, and have been awarded a $10,000 planning grant by the Baker Polito Administration that supports early college programs. And, basically, it gives us what's called an early college designation, and makes us eligible for significantly larger grants. We're a group of, I believe it's fifteen districts across the state that have qualified for the planning grant, and a smaller number of, a subset of that group will receive, potentially receive a larger grant to implement early college planning. I'm gonna read a quote from the governor, because it's a big, it's a big kind of important issue for the governor. "Early college programs are crucial for exposing students to the opportunities of higher education can create, and with these designations, more students will be able to earn college credits at no cost. We are pleased to work with these districts to expand or launch early college programs so their students are better prepared for successful academic and professional careers after high school." So, this year is the second year we've really been engaged in the early college process. Last year, we offered a number of courses, this year we're offering, I believe it's four courses through both Framingham State University, Mass Bay Community College, and Quinnasignan Community College. And I just want to recognize a few folks. I want to thank Colleen Coffey and the team from the College Planning Center at Framingham State University, Framingham State President Javier Savalos, and Mass Bay President David Pedel. Currently, FSU is supporting two early college courses, and Quinnasignan Community College is sponsoring one course through grants, so these are all courses that a number of our high school students are accessing for free, they're also not paying anything for books either, and they're getting an actual college transcript at the completion of the We're also, we're also looking to support this program through our local budget, and we've talked about that through the budgeting process, and we're looking to expand this process. So Craig, myself, and the high school team are talking about how do we kind of seamlessly put this into the high school curriculum. Right now, the courses are all taking place in the evening, we want to have those courses take place during the day, so it's more sustainable over time, and there's a lot of steps before we get there, but we're having conversations with folks at the colleges, the Milford Teachers Association, our administrative team, and once we have kind of a clear plan and pathway in place, we're gonna get this information out to parents as quickly as possible. But two very exciting things going on.
Very, very. Thank you.
And that's all, yeah?
Anybody have any comments or questions for Dr. McIntyre? Great.
I just wanted to make one comment.
Sure, go ahead.
With both of these initiatives, I think what stands out to me is they both bring us outside of the borders of Milford.
Absolutely.
And, you know, whenever we want to learn and bring improvement to our district, we have great people and great leaders here, but Milford doesn't offer everything, looking outside at the colleges, meeting with the college presidents, I think that shows such initiative on the part of the district, and especially looking out for our learners who may not ordinarily have those opportunities with college. When I think about the MasQ Early Learning Tour, bringing people, and to your point about where we were on technology when I joined this committee, kind of what you were referring to, Mike, and earlier, on another topic, and where we are today, there has been so much progress made, and, you know, I think when we, even thinking about comparing it to the educator evaluation system, and when we talk about what makes a proficient educator, there's a whole number of indicators that make somebody proficient, and then there's this whole second level of what makes an educator exemplary, and what, if we were to equate that to a district, I would think what makes a district exemplary is it's one that other districts would like to learn from, and that we can be a model in that area. And MasQ is such a highly regarded organization within education, everyone talks about MasQ, we want to go and learn from that organization, to think that they want to come and sponsor something to learn from us is a great reflection of the work that's been accomplished here in a very short time. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Actually, Kevin, so to your point too, where we continue to look for ways to build out a curriculum for kids that are not on a college track, looking for ways to build workforce-ready programs, working with the Blackstone Valley Educational Foundation, and...
And Paulinski is great, and his team is phenomenal.
Paulinski and his team are phenomenal in adding a ton of value in that category, and also Josh Ottlin is pioneering some, some additional curriculum surrounding some more kind of fringe curriculum, so, like manufacturing methodologies, construction management, et cetera, and actually building partnerships with a lot of local manufacturers and firms. So, those internship programs and partnerships are, you know, under development and will be coming in the next, you know, school year or two, but I think it's important to add that, you know, for all of the effort that we are putting into college, for kids that are not on a college track, we're looking for opportunities to make them successful and competitive in the workforce as well.
And that's, that's absolutely true. I think we're seeing more and more that people aren't taking necessarily a linear path from high school to college to career, it's a little more, a little more wavy, and there starts and stops along the way, and the average age of college students has gone up considerably in the past decade. So what we're, we're really trying to do, and it's kind of echoing what you're saying, Jim, is to create as many pathways as possible to success for students, and it looks, and it looks different for different students, but ultimately, we want them to be heading in a place where they're gonna be ultimately successful in life.
Yeah, and you know, I, I think traditionally, people think, you know, it's more of a pull system now, you know, you have to go out and create those opportunities and create those partnerships, and make them accessible to the student base, so it's, you know, the days of just waiting for students to come in, educate them, and they all go to college, it's, it's a very different landscape than it was. So, in order to be competitive, you have to go out and build those relationships.
And we've had great success with the Hotel Hospitality Program.
Yeah, fantastic.
We've seen a lot of students kind of head into that field, either through going to a college program and studying that, or going directly into the workforce, because the companies that we're working with, Atlas Travel and our, our hotel partners, are so impressed by the caliber of students in the program, that they're saying, hey, you know, come work with us for, you know, a year or two, until you figure out maybe what you want to do, and maybe this is your pathway.
Yeah, it's fantastic.
And the same thing with business and banking, that's, we're just starting that off, but it's a similar kind of, similar kind of event.
Excellent. Right, because not everybody comes out of high school ready to go to college. Right, 'cause not everybody comes out of high school ready to go to college.
Correct, and we, you know, and you're seeing, even, even college-bound students, you're seeing a higher percentage of kids across the country taking what's called a gap year, where they do something different for a year, or maybe explore something before they commit to going to college, because the expenses are extraordinary now. And you can't, you know, the seven-year undergraduate plan is out of reach for, I'd say, ninety-nine percent of families. So you really have to kind of have a good plan and try to meet it as quickly as possible, because otherwise, the, the costs become staggering.
Absolutely, absolutely. Any other members? Okay, next agenda item is report of the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, Mr. Consigli.
And not such exciting news, homework is up today. Unfortunately, or fortunately. Um, so, last year, we started the process to kind of craft guidelines around homework that could be, uh, used for all schools and put within their, their, um, school handbooks. And I, I think, I think if you thought, really thought about trying to get three or four hundred teachers on the same page when it comes to homework, it's not an easy task. And certainly, families have a, a different perspective, and students have a different perspective. So there's a lot of stakeholders, I think, that we have to consider when, when considering a set of guidelines. So initially, we started off with, uh, having an open forum with any, any teacher in the district that wanted to come out. That was in the spring, we got, we got some feedback from that. Did some research, uh, and then crafted these guidelines, and then sent it out to all the staff and let them offer feedback. Um, so that's the, that's where we're at right now. There was a lot of good constructive feedback. But what I want to share with you today is, is kind of the points that I think everybody agrees on. And then I'll share with you maybe a couple of things that are, are sticking points. So, the point of the guidelines is to provide teachers, students, and families with clear expectations about homework and how it fits into a comprehensive learning plan for students in grades pre-K to eight. I think it's impossible for us to talk, try to regulate at all anything that happens at the high school, because the high school, you could be in so many different courses, it'd be very difficult to try to do anything with that. Assignments include, but are not limited to, written reading or studying assignments, and they should have a clear learning objective that's aligned to the curriculum. They should extend and enrich or enhance the learning experience within the classroom. Uh, teachers have the authority to exercise their professional judgment when they're, with regard to homework, so long as the assignments are relevant and meaningful for students, reasonable in length, and manageable for students to complete, uh, part of a comprehensive plan or a unit designed by the teacher, appropriately challenging based on the student's ability, and never used as a consequence, punishment, or part of a behavior plan. And I think one of the most important pieces of this is, we want families to keep in mind that they should and at any time communicate with teachers. If, if homework isn't going well, or if it's taking an extraordinarily long time, parents should be contacting teachers immediately. It's important feedback for teachers to know how much time homework is actually taking a student when they get home. What a teacher might plan for and what actually occurs. Teachers may not have that information, so it's very important that families do communicate that. And, and I guess, finally, um, homework should contribute to the mastery of the learning objective and should not negatively impact students, families, and teachers. So, I think that's the bottom line. I think, you know, we heard about anxiety. Certainly, students have anxiety when it comes to school, when it comes to homework. And then there are others that just frankly don't want to do their homework. And still, you have other families that are here, there, and everywhere, and where does homework fit into priorities, um, when it comes to what's going on after school? Uh, what we, what we are, what I am having a hard time getting agreement with, with teachers is time constraints, uh, and trying to nail down, um, how many days, or how many hours, or minutes that, that homework should be given at any of the different levels. I think they, I had full agreement that at the pre-K, there shouldn't be homework. So that's, that's positive, no hours of homework for preschool kids. But other than that, um, I think we're close. And I think if we, if we get teachers together a little more, I think, I think we'll come to consensus what seems to make sense for everybody. So that's where we're at with, uh, the homework guidelines. I don't know if anybody has questions.
Craig, I have some questions. So we'll go back to the forum that we had at the high school for the parents, the homework forum. Some of the things that came out of that, so let's flip it the other way around, let's go back to the parents. No homework, no consistency in how homework was being sent home, the length of time that was being assigned. If you remember, right, Carrie did a really nice job when she spoke about from the high school level. She said the high school level is so different, because they may assign you a homework assignment that might take you two weeks. And it's, we're trying to get you ready for college, because that's what it's like in college. So, you know, you can start it on Monday and give yourself two weeks to finish it, or you can start it on Thursday and it's due on Friday, but it's up to you. So that was interesting. But I, I remember from the, from the elementary school level and from, um, Stacy and Woodland, there seemed to be a real concern of either no homework getting assigned or very inconsistent type of homework assignments. And how did you find that with the meeting with the teachers?
I guess my own personal feelings of homework aside, um, I think that's an important, actually, statement. I think teachers have different philosophies about homework. And I think, I think there's a, there's a strong, there's strong agreement around reading, that reading should be happening at home. However, sometimes when there's a, a book to be read, kids don't always look at that as nightly homework. They may see it as, geez, I gotta have this book read in three weeks, and I'm gonna try to cram it in in, in the last day, and, and... Parents need to understand that when books do come home, that is nightly homework, and it should be twenty minutes of homework every single night, regardless of what, what level you're at. There's plenty of studies that show that reading will increase, um, your ability to learn in, in school. I don't know if I'm answering your question, but it, but I think if we got a group of educators together from all different levels, we're gonna have a very different answer from, from all, all the teachers. And that's what I'm having a hard time doing, is trying to, to put that time constraint and inconsistent piece, uh, across the whole, a whole school or a whole grade level. So, again, what I want to be clear with this is, I really don't want to handcuff teachers, because I really want them to feel like it should be up to their professional judgment as to what they think the student sitting in front of them needs. And unfortunately, what student A needs and student B needs may be two totally different things. So this student may not have a homework, and this one over here may have a different set of homework, versus this one over here who has something else to do. So, that's really the hard thing I'm having with this, is trying to nail that down, nail that piece down.
If I can jump in real quick too, Mike, um, one of, one of the, there's kind of a Goldilocks syndrome that goes along with homework. You know, it's too hot, too cold, sometimes it's just right. But I think you ask a group of parents, a group of students, a group of teachers, and they're all gonna have, like with, with the forum last year, I think you heard, there's too much homework, there's not enough homework. It's just about right. Like you and I could have the same assignment, it'd take you twenty minutes, it'd take me an hour. You know, so there's a lot of, there's a lot of variability with it, and it's almost like building the perfect mousetrap. I think what, what Craig's trying to do, and, and I think the whole district is trying to do, and I applaud Craig for his efforts, is really to try to get some coherence around what the expectations are, and really try to get to keep the conversation going, because it's important. And I think, you know, the, the thing that struck me that Craig said the most was the relevance piece. Is how do we, how do we maintain the relevance? Because I've got a son who was in sixth grade, who tries to get his homework done as quickly as humanly possible, regardless of the, with the rate of error or anything else, because he just wants to get through it, because he doesn't see the value in it. And we want to move to a point where, you know, the students can really see a connection to... And there's a lot of cases where that does happen, but I think that's, that's gonna be the key, is how do you make it seem important and valuable, without saying it counts eighty percent of your grade? You know, we want it grade-driven, we want it kind of value-driven, and well distributed.
And then another piece of that is sometimes people mistake having three hours of homework as having three hours of rigorous homework. And that's not necessarily the case, the amount of time doesn't necessarily measure the rigor of the assignment.
Well, it's interesting you make reference to, um, to reading. And I remember, um, a couple of years ago, we were talking about our MCAS math scores. And I asked a question, I said, how many, how many problems on the MCAS score involve word problems? And they said, oh, quite a few. And I said, well, if you have a child that's struggling with reading, they're gonna struggle with word problems. You know, so, well, thank you, thank you. Any other member?
I just had a question.
Sure.
So do you think that at the end, the guidelines, are you looking to create something written that might include like a maximum number of minutes per grade level, where if a child hits ten minutes of grade one, you can stop? Or, which would give teachers some flexibility, like no more than?
So, the way it reads now is there's a not to exceed.
Okay, that's what we already have.
There's a not to exceed, and there's, um, a frequency, so how many days.
Yeah, okay.
But I guess where I'm running into some problems in, in really trying to think of this is, there's certain scenarios where unfortunately, you may have more than that, and there's no two ways about it. Not every night, but in the example that, that Mike gave earlier of a, a project that maybe takes two or three weeks to complete. If they're not doing the work all the way through, you may end up in a scenario where you're spending two, three, four hours on the last night trying to get it done. That, that's just how it is. But, but on another case, you may have, you may have a test, and it may take you an hour and a half to study for it, and somebody else, it may only take twenty minutes, depending on how they, what, how they, they have been doing throughout the unit. So, that's where I'm, I'm, I'm having some trouble, is how do you, how do you articulate that in a set of guidelines so that everybody understands it?
Right, and I, I mean, I guess eventually, if there's some kind of philosophy to your point about rigor and what, we don't just give homework because we just want to give homework.
Right.
It's, what's the philosophy, and so it's okay if you don't give homework.
Exactly.
The world isn't going to come to an end, and at the end, I think what we want to achieve is balance and value.
Exactly.
But I, I did have one other question, um, that just went on my head. I don't know, I, I lost it. It'll come back to me.
No, but that's clear in here too, is that, you know...
Oh, I did, I know, I know what my question is, sorry. It's the one thing I've heard from parents, um, in, except, with the exception of consistency, which I have heard, is about school vacations.
Yep.
And thinking about how can we frame whatever the new guidelines are to ensure that there's not a test on the Monday after a vacation, or something that just really handcuffs kids. And to your point, if there's a long-term project and it expands over a vacation, that's time management, and that's understandable. But I think sometimes assignments are given, you know, keep a journal every day of your December vacation. And do you have to? Like, does it have to be done at that time? Because some kids can't control what happens in their family over vacation. So that might be one hard and fast thing that would be helpful to look at.
There is, there is language in here about weekends and, and vacations. Um, and to your point, like, for example, you may have a book to read over three weeks.
Right.
And one of those weeks may happen to be a vacation week. So if you don't do anything on the vacation week, you only have two weeks to do it.
Right.
Right? But I agree that, that vacation should be kind of sacred for, for everyone.
Yeah.
I think kids need, need, need a break as well as teachers.
Yeah.
John?
Yeah, I just want to say, I think you're going about things in the right manner, Craig. And what I think is, in, in that sense, you don't want to put too many strict regulations too soon. You know, this, this is probably gonna be a little bit of philosophy and, and policy that evolves, so to speak, and you don't want to, you know, put something that's too restrictive and then, you know, look at it a year later and say, we have to, you know, lift this requirement on that one. I think, you know, I can tell just by your presentation tonight that that's not what you're doing, but, you know, I think you're definitely, you know, going about this in the right direction.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work on it.
Thanks.
All set, okay. Next agenda item is a report of the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Human Resources, Mrs. Perry.
Yes, for the committee's approval this evening, I have, um, six warrants. Uh, the first warrant is in the amount of five thousand eight hundred twenty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents.
Motion from John, second from Jim, all in favor.
The second warrant is in the amount of two thousand twenty-eight dollars and sixteen cents.
Motion from Jen, second from Jim, all in favor.
The third warrant is in the amount of twelve thousand nine hundred fourteen dollars and eighty-five cents.
Motion from Jim, second from John, all in favor.
The fourth warrant is in the amount of five hundred forty-four thousand two hundred fifty-six dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Motion from Jen, second by John, all in favor.
The fifth warrant is in the amount of one hundred forty-one thousand two hundred fourteen dollars and eighteen cents.
Motion from John, second by Jim, all in favor.
And the last warrant is in the amount of sixteen thousand three hundred eighty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Motion from Jen, second by Jim, all in favor.
The committee has a professional development request for course reimbursement in the amount of thirteen thousand four hundred seventy-three dollars and two cents.
That requires a vote, correct, Kathy?
It does.
Motion from John, second by Jim, all in favor.
Uh, we also have a list of the, uh, latest appointments and hires for your, um, information. And we also have, um, the annual Washington DC, uh, field trip, out-of-state field trip, um, for your approval. It is scheduled for May twenty-first through May twenty-fourth. And that also requires a vote.
Any idea, Kathy, how many children are going, just a rough idea?
I do, we have a hundred and sixty students.
So with a hundred and sixty students on a trip, how many nurses are going?
We have, I believe...
And I know Judy does a great job, but I'm just...
Two nurses and eight chaperones.
Okay. Is that normally what we've had over the year?
I'm sorry, seventeen, um, chaperones, I apologize.
Wow.
Usually...
And two nurses.
And two nurses.
Great, great.
Usually, it's something I'm having to...
Craig's the expert on Washington DC, if anybody has any further questions. He's run a few.
He's, oh, you're going, Mr. Consigli?
No.
Oh. Motion from Jim, second by John, all in favor. Okay.
And that's all I have, sorry.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Okay, next agenda item is Subcommittee Updates, Budget. I believe you, your policy was tonight?
We passed it, yeah.
Okay. Next is Climate, Culture, and Morale, we did meet. There's a lot of exciting things that are going on in the schools. We talked quite a bit, um, I was quite touched about, um, how in almost every single school, they have, um, collections of coats and hats and gloves, and, uh, they went as far as pajamas and sweaters. And, um, we talked about how, um, the schools were coming up collaboratively together with ways to get people to take advantage of them, because they have boxes and boxes of these donated coats and hats and gloves and pajamas and everything, but people were kind of embarrassed to go. So what they're doing is they're coming up with an idea that someone, um, that may not need them would go and get them, and that would inspire someone to say, oh, well, if they, if they are gonna do it, I'll do it. And so I thought that was very, very positive. Morale, pretty much is, uh, in, in good shape. Everybody reported that, you know, for the most part, things were, things were good. Um, a common, common issue, and I'm glad that the teacher from the Woodland School brought it up, was that, uh, I had two people from the, uh, in the public say to me, they were kind of concerned, and Kevin and I spoke about this after the meeting. They were concerned about the cleanliness of the Woodland Elementary School. And I said, wow, I said, it's a brand-new school, how can we have an issue with it? And, uh, the teacher from that school did bring it up, uh, without me saying anything about it. And, uh, so Kevin, I believe, had a meeting with Rob Quinn. Um, it's a general, uh, concern about, within all the schools. And, you know, we all have it in our workplaces, that the teachers were talking about, there's a delivery of, say, paper, and the paper ends up, say, in the foyer, and it never gets out of the foyer for like two or three weeks. And, and that was kind of a common theme, and though we thought we had addressed it, what we had originally talked in the first meeting got taken care of, but it repeated itself. So, you know, we talked about afterwards, how can we come up with a system so that this doesn't, doesn't happen? But cleanliness in all the schools, I have to say honestly, was a common, uh, something that people talked about in common. And, uh, and Kevin's, or Dr. McIntyre, I should say, I apologize, has already addressed it with Rob Quinn. Um, and, and we're moving forward on it, but, uh, we're aware of it. And, uh, you know, as I said to Dr. And, uh, you know, as I said to Dr. McIntyre, you know, no school should be unclean, but when you got a brand-new elementary school, state-of-the-art, you know, it's, you know, only opened, you know, a very short time, it needs to be looked at. And so, but other than that, and, and, and that, no disrespect to anybody, nobody was criticizing the janitorial staff, nobody was criticizing Rob Quinn. It was just a, you know, common factor, and, uh, we know that we need to, to work on it. But other than that, it was, it was, uh, that was our second meeting of the year.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, they're very positive. They really, truly, truly are. And it's, it's interesting to watch the, the teachers, Judy Dagnes is the head of nursing, you know, communicate across the table with one another and, and, and work out ideas. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a major plus, so it was a, it was a great, great meeting.
I just have one question.
Yes.
Mike, it's probably more for Kevin or Craig. Um, I think when we talked about Woodland and the custodial staffing for that building, at one point, there was going to be a one-point-oh custodian assigned to that building. Is that, and I think there, there was some concern about would that be enough? And I know you were gonna start the year, but is that part of the problem, that we're understaffed and should look at that?
I, I think there's a, there's a few issues going. I think, you know, the time of year plays a factor because we've got, you know, snow and ice being tracked through the school.
Yeah.
Um, because, you know, we're trying to get the kids out as much, as frequently as possible. What's the, what's the FTE at Woodland Cath? It's over one-point-oh, isn't it? Because we have somebody that comes in on a swing.
There is a, um, from what I understand, an intern. One of our students is going over, um, during the day, during the busy time period, as well as the, uh, nighttime cleaning crew and the full-time day custodian.
Day person, okay. It's definitely something we can look at because the square footage of the old Woodland versus the new Woodland, there's a significant difference.
Yeah, and I think it seemed like it, we were gonna give it a try and see, but it, it just seems when you look at what a day custodian is asked to do, it's generally running around, cleaning things, dealing with emergencies, salting, and dealing with stor- you know, there's just so many things that person does that they may not be able to contribute to a lot of cleaning as much as we might like. So, I do think it'd be worth talking about.
Yeah, no, you definitely do.
For our budget discussions.
Yep.
I couldn't agree more, Kevin, even tonight, coming in the parking lot.
Oh, yeah.
Where we parked. The amount of sand and salt that's just in that parking lot that gets tracked into the school.
Oh, it's crazy.
I can't imagine what's in the front of all the buildings that everybody's dragging in the building, so. And we have the same problem at work. We have to increase our cleaning staff in the wintertime, and then we cut them down once the bad weather goes away. Same thing, so. Any other member? Okay, next one's policy.
Well, we met tonight, and we reviewed the, um, new language for the nondiscrimination on the basis of disability policy. And there were really no changes to that policy from our perspective. It, um, generally boiled down to compliance, to make sure that the policy is up to date and in compliance with the current laws. Um, so we will be bringing that back to the committee for the next meeting for a first read. Kind of as an offshoot of that, we also looked at the policy called nondiscrimination and anti-harassment procedures, which is the way the policies are labeled with letters. So, that's technically now labeled ACF, but the policy we looked at tonight was also labeled ACF. So, at the next meeting, we'd like to talk about relabeling, um, the nondiscrimination and anti-harassment procedure to name it ACF one. So, one, the bullying part of the, um, the nondiscrimination on the basis of disability we're proposing would be named ACF, and the nondiscrimination and anti-harassment, we would be requesting to change the name of that policy or the label to ACF one. So, it's just a way of organizing and labeling these two policies. One policy we'll be looking at in terms of updated language, and the second policy we'll be looking at just changing the label to better organize the way the two policies are, are labeled, for lack of a better word. Labels. Um, the other policy that we looked at tonight was the district's bullying policy. And again, we did not, we're not recommending any changes to that policy. We just reviewed it for, um, currency and applicability of the policy in terms of where we are in the schools, um, especially in light of the, um, the forum coming up February seven. But I don't think we have to bring that one back for a second review.
March thirteenth, which, which is the date.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's not March thirteenth, this bullying, uh, yeah. Um, but we're not recommending any changes to that policy at this time.
Thank you. Any member have any comments? No? Okay, next agenda item is future agenda items. Does anybody have any future agenda items they'd like to add? Have added to the future meetings? No? Okay, next agenda item is old business. Does anybody have any old business they'd like to bring up? I do. Um, I apologize that I wasn't here at the last meeting. I was tied up at the roundtable meeting at town hall, um, with all the department heads. But the meeting before that, we had a member of the community come before us and make a presentation about Milford High School, um, being a level-three high school. And, uh, I thank that, I thank that gentleman for coming before us and putting on that presentation. But I also want the public to know, and maybe we need as a community to do a better job of getting our plan out there because the administration does have a plan. We do have a plan. We are aware of the situation. We are aware that, uh, we've gone from a level-one high school to a level-three high school. We're very, very aware of that. I want the public to know that the administration, the teachers, and the school committee, and the future school committee members, whoever they may be, are committed to bring Milford High School back to where it was. It's not gonna happen tomorrow. It's not gonna happen next week. It's not gonna happen next year. But I know that Dr. McIntyre is, is driving the bus, and, uh, we hope that in, in some future time, we will, we will be there. But we need to, we need to all work together to do that. And, uh, when I say "we," um, the community, uh, the parents, the administration, the school committee, we all need to work together. Uh, we all need to listen, um, and, uh, and take ideas. Dr. McIntyre is our superintendent. I know that I am a hundred percent behind him. I believe the school committee is a hundred percent behind him. I take that back. I know the school committee is a hundred percent behind him. And Craig, assistant superintendent Craig Kinsigley. So, I just want the public to know that, um, the administration, the school committee, the teachers, we are aware of it. We are aware of it, and we work, we work at it on a daily basis, a daily basis. Um, we have some challenges. We have some challenges. We are aware of those challenges. And, uh, we're gonna do what we have to to continue to bring ourselves, you know, where we want to be. And, uh, you know, everybody, every day wants to improve, so we want to do the same thing. And we, we will get there. We will get there. I can't tell you when, but we will definitely, definitely get there. And it will be done with people working together. I spoke earlier about you can never have enough communication, never. I thank that gentleman for taking the time to come before us and, and, and putting on the presentation. It just heightens the awareness, heightens the awareness. We know it's there. We know it's there. And we work at it constantly to, to fix it, and we are committed to continue to do that. Thank you. Any other member?
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Jim. I think the essence of everyone in this room is to improve this district.
Right.
Um, on every level, on every, in it, during every day. That goes without say to put, you know, there's, there's been, you know, some metrics that have, that have decreased over the years, and I'm, I have no doubt that we'll improve them, but, um, it's not like anyone who's sitting here is satisfied throughout the district at any point in time to say, you know, "Yeah, we're, we're, we're very satisfied with where we are." It, it's been everyone's, um, goal to improve the district and to improve the opportunities for the kids in this district. And, and those opportunities are bound, as we've all, you know, recounted over the years, yeah, so.
Right.
Um, I agree. We, we're all striving to improve. We are. I think we always have.
Right. And, and, and I think it's important that the, the administration and, and the teachers all need to know that, that, uh, great job, great job. Um, and, uh, they work harder every single day, every single day. And, uh, and, you know, we're here to support. I think, as a committee, I think we do a great job. I hope the future committee members, whoever they are, uh, will continue to support the administration and the teachers because they do, they all strive every day to do the right thing, and I, I take my hat off to them. I really do. Any other member? No? Okay, and with that, I'll take a motion for adjournment. Jim? Jen? Good night, everybody. Thank you very, very much, and have a nice weekend.